Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to the Town Manager Public Hearing. We're just trying to deal with some feedback to my office. Okay, thank you for being here. My name is Lisa Wong. I am the Town Manager in Winchester. First off, I want to thank my staff here at Town Hall, in particular, the Assistant Town Manager Mark Too Good, the Town Clerk, and the Town Moderator for all the preparation they've put into the upcoming 2020 Fall Town Meeting that will begin next Thursday, November 5. As with Spring Town Meeting, the pandemic unfortunately has made us make the hard decision to hold the meeting virtually again. And as is customary, my office holds a public hearing to listen to comments and questions. This year, in addition to this public hearing, we had two precinct meetings last Tuesday and yesterday to discuss Select Board Articles 12 and 13. These presentations are on the town website, and the meetings were recorded on WinCam, so you can go to WinCam's website to bring those up. So tonight, I'm going to go through this PowerPoint presentation that shows the articles and motions, and then take comments from the public. So if you wish to speak, please indicate that you would like to speak by using the chat function. And if you could please note the articles you wish to speak about, let me know. We ask that you limit your remarks to about a minute per article and no more than five minutes total. So certainly, if you have more than five and you can fit those in five minutes, that would be great. Patty from my office is going to be taking notes on who wishes to speak and what order, and she will assist me in unmuting each speaker in order of those requests. So if there's time at the end, we'll circle back for additional comments. But if you are participating via phone, you can indicate that you want to speak by pressing *9. If you have any logistical questions, please put those in the chat as well, and Patty or I will try to assist you. I also know that there are a number of people who might be watching this from home, and therefore, you won't be able to chat with us or unmute your phone. And if you have any questions or comments regarding these Town Meeting warrant articles, please contact my office. You can call us at 781-721-7133, or you can email us at townmanager@winchester.us. Okay, so you will note that several of the articles will say Consent Agenda right at the top. So this particular article is a standard article that is at the beginning of Town Meeting. It simply states that there were reports from Town Offices and the Finance Committee. However, unlike an in-person Town Meeting, these reports will not be read or issued as a presentation during the meeting, but they will be available online. So this Consent Agenda is a common form of organizing motions to group together articles that are usually recurring or standard or straightforward. Any five Town Meeting members can remove an article from the Consent Agenda to be voted on individually. So there are currently 13 articles in the Consent Agenda, and you will see them listed as such at the top of each slide. And in the motion book that was mailed to Town Meeting members, these 13 articles are checked off under the Consent Agenda column at the beginning of the book under the Table of Contents. Article 2 is also a standard article at Fall Town Meeting, so not every Town Meeting, but Fall Town Meeting. Right now, this motion is to actually indefinitely postpone this article. This essentially states that we can declare vacant certain seats of Town Meeting members if they have failed to meet certain attendance standards, and right now, there are actually no known Town Meeting members whose seats need to be declared vacant at this time due to attendance issues. Article 3 is a motion by petitioners. Actually, I'm going to jump to the article. So this was originally submitted as a resident petition for the 2020 Spring Town Meeting. But unfortunately, due to the pandemic, the petitioner agreed to push this off to the Fall Town Meeting. This was a petition signed by nearly 300 Winchester residents, and this is looking for some technology to be used, some particular technology to be used at a Town Meeting, and they've included one particular type of that technology, a company called Voits, but there are certainly other kinds of technologies available for Town Meeting, and we're in fact using some of that for these remote Town Meetings. So Articles 4 through 11 are Planning Board articles. There was a separate public hearing for these articles on October 6, 2020. Certainly, if anyone here has any comments on those articles, I can take those comments and make sure that those are sent to the Town Planner, the Planning Board, and the Select Board. But you can also reach out to the Town Planner if you need more information, have questions or comments on these articles. Article 12 and 13, so these two articles are Select Board-sponsored articles that are quite complex, and that is why we held two separate precinct meetings where we had various consultants and Town Staff on those calls to answer specific questions regarding these two particular articles. So Article 12 is a vote to authorize a Select Board to acquire, for the purposes of affordable housing, a parcel that is often called the CVS parcel, even though it was never developed into a CVS, but it's three parcels of land that are located at the corner of Washington and Swanton Street. This has also been the subject of several community meetings and articles, and there was previously a plan that was circulated by a developer. Financing fell through from that development, but it was an affordable housing project that seemed to be supported by the community and by the neighborhood. This article enables the Board to acquire the site, to move an affordable housing project forward, and also designate the funds to for that acquisition. And that also includes the possibility of the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust, or its designee, to to provide the funding to pay for that particular loan. Okay, Article 13. This is the Waterfield Parking Lot. This is a part of the Winchester Housing Production Plan from a few years ago. It was also a request for qualifications that was put out earlier this year, and then subsequently, developers were pre-qualified, and then six proposals were received as part of a request for proposals, and five were considered by the Board in an interview process, and a right now, the Town is negotiating with a particular developer, their top choice, but it is subject to Town Meeting approval. So this article gives the Select Board approval to negotiate a land disposition agreement. Actually, so here's a motion with a lease with a developer, of course conditioned upon approval of those terms in the land agreement by Town Meeting. And here's a website that's available, so you can actually go to just winchester.us. You can Google Winchester Waterfield Development, and all the materials should come up there if you want to find out more about the project. And this is just the background information. Okay, so Article 14 is a rise from a series of public meetings and negotiations with the MBTA. The MBTA has looked at a number of different items that are not standard for a project and have essentially asked that the Town cost-share these particular items. So the MBTA gave the Town a list of items that we reviewed, and we are putting forward about $240,000 of those items that we would like for the Town Meeting to consider cost-sharing. So those items include the installation of granite cladding on some of the exterior spaces where it would, I think the MBTA standard would just be like a concrete, and trying to salvage some stones to make sure that we match the exterior of that building. This was really one of the top concerns we heard at various public meetings we had to make sure that the facade was in keeping with the historic downtown and understanding that this is a project that will be here for a long time. This is something that we'll have to live with. There's also a few other items that are smaller dollar amounts, like repainting the pedestrian tunnel, and also installing an irrigation system for some of the new plantings along the viaduct. So Article 15 is the adoption of an existing Massachusetts general law that allows a Town to pay the difference between what our public employee makes and their pay if they are on leave to fulfill military services. The Town actually only has one employee at this moment that qualifies under this section. And my understanding is that this doesn't always mean that the Town would actually have to make any expenditures. In some cases, an employee will actually make more on their military leave than they do as a public employee here. But in the case that there is a difference, this allows the Town to pay that differential. Okay, Article 16 is also part of the Consent Agenda. This is looking for a sum of $55,000 from free cash for traffic mitigation, design, engineering, and construction to support the Engineering Department. This is an article that Town Meeting has seen before in the past in order to supplement the Engineering Department's fairly small budgeted engineering services amount and allows us to do additional projects. The next few articles are related to the Capital Planning Committee. They began their work earlier this year to review a number of projects from the Town. They have submitted a capital planning report which was sent out earlier, so Town Meeting members should have received that capital planning report that has a lot more information. This is just the article moving that forward. Article 18, these are the various projects that have been selected to be funded. And I'm just going to move on to the motions because the motions have the dollar amounts related to those various projects. So Morocco School Roof and Electrical System Testing for $143,000. The Fire Department Building Project for some repairs and security equipment for $390,000. HVAC upgrades at Town Hall for $75,000. McCall Middle School Masonry Design and Restoration Schematic Plan for $60,000. Town Hall Flooring Replacement for $270,000, and the Department of Public Works Stable Replacement, the engineering for that project, $50,000. In addition, there are funds from free cash and capital stabilization. Flood mitigation for the Morocco Culvert, this is the final engineering and permitting for $410,000. Various downtown business district engineering and improvements for $75,000. The Department of Public Works transportation improvements, the engineering for that $100,000. Highland Avenue Traffic Improvements Engineering, $65,000. And this here is related to another article that we'll talk about. The Department of Public Works Building four-wheel-drive truck for both the Buildings Department and the Maintenance Department. Okay, Article 19 is also part of the Consent Agenda, and these are related to unexpected capital sorry, to appropriate money from unexpended capital accounts associated with complete projects. And you can see here some small projects, a DPW wall and a storage shed, both just under $5,000 total. A second motion here, there's about $76,000 in various items, including some DPW equipment, building equipment, and the Mount Vernon Street Bridge. Article 20 relates to the North Reservoir Dam. A previous Town Meeting approved the engineering costs for this project. We've determined that there are some deficiencies at this dam that we would like to repair. Now that we have finished the engineering, we have a better cost estimate, so this article requests that $6,500,000 be appropriated for the construction of those improvements to address the deficiencies at this dam. So Article 21 is also part of the Consent Agenda. So these amendments to both the Grass and Synthetic Revolving Fund provisions and the Town's Revolving Fund Bylaw will allow the Recreation Department to create a position that is funded by the revolving account revenue. This position will help address field permit and policy enforcement, as well as address the safety of our fields. The Town had recently completed a Fields Master Plan, and also with the heavy activity at these fields, it makes sense to have enforcement at the fields to make sure that we follow the Fields Master Plan, make sure that we keep people safe, and also make sure that we protect our investments. Article 22 is also part of the Consent Agenda. This is a recurring article. It differs in the exact amount of funding every year because it relates to the number of ride shares. As you can see in the background, it's essentially 20 cents a ride. So as that goes up and down, this number will go up and down. The funds must be used for a transportation-related project. Last year, these funds were used for the improvements around McCall. This year, we would like to use these funds for Highland Avenue. You saw that some $65,000 for engineering around Highland Avenue was included in a previous article, so this and this project is under consideration at this Town Meeting. Article 23 is part of the Consent Agenda, but it's the motion as to indefinitely postpone this article because there are sufficient funds in both the Wedgemar and Town Parking Accounts to make the recommended changes in maintenance for these lots. Article 24 is an article that is fairly recent, but we've seen this at the last few Town Meetings, and we will continue to see this. There was a change that was made by the state to funnel peg access and cable-related funds through the Town rather than going directly to WinCam. So it comes to the Town, and we have to allocate those funds to WinCam at each Town Meeting. Okay, Article 25 is a vote to transfer funds from free cash or other available funds to supplement or reduce appropriations previously voted on in the fiscal year budget. So there are so there are 11 motions, and the of course, it's in smaller print, but there is a as you can see, a lot of these motions are related to COVID-19, so additional funding required. For example, you'll see inspectional services because of COVID-19. You'll see contractual cleaning and supply services, overtime for cleaning municipal buildings. There is some additional costs related to elections. There is also some additional costs related to our recycling contract because recycling costs unfortunately have gone up, and Winchester has fortunately been able to had a previously negotiated lower contract, but unfortunately, that is coming to the end, and we're going to be needing more money. Okay, Article 26, this is part of the Consent Agenda. It's kind of a typical article that we see every year related to water and sewer retain earnings. Article 27 is also part of the Consent Agenda. It is also a typical article, but in this case, sorry, this is not a typical article, but in this case, we're voting for it to be indefinitely postponed. The recreation budget has been in flux due to the restrictions placed on the type of programming that it can do. So this was put in proactively in case that department needed more funding and to give them much more flexibility, but at this time, we're keeping an eye on the budget, and we're just going to postpone this article. Article 28, part of the Consent Agenda. This is a fairly typical article. This is just our mechanism to pay for any prior-year bills that had happened to come in after the close of fiscal 2020, so this is our mechanism to pay for those bills. Article 29 is the Personnel Board Article. The Personnel Board met last night, and they're finalizing this article. They'll be sending out their reports under separate cover, so everyone should receive a, Town Meeting members should receive a hard copy in the mail, and once it's completed, it will be posted on the Town Website. This article does include a new contract for the Clerical Union, which is the sixth and final union, Town Union to settle, and it also includes an adjustment for non-union staff. And Article 30 is essentially the typical closing article for Town Meeting. Okay, I'm going to scroll back up to the top and see if Patty can assist if there are any questions or comments at this time. Okay, so I don't see any comments in the chat just yet. I also don't see anybody's hands raised. Patty, did I miss anything while we were presenting? Okay. Okay, well, I was just pausing to see if anybody did have any questions or comments, but seeing none. Oh, Sally? Great. Thanks, Sally.
Yes, I just said one question because I don't think that I received the Capital Planning Report yet. Is that something that went in the mail like within the last couple of days?
It did. I think we were hoping that it would land in people's mailboxes today.
Yeah, I'll look for it.
But I've heard from, you know, people who received the warrant that it actually seemed to take an extra day, so Sally, but it is on the Town's website?
That's what I figured, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Excellent. Okay.
And we certainly want to hear from folks. If they're not getting it for some reason, we certainly want to hear, especially if you do need a hard copy.
Right, and one question about the dam. So the dam, so we are appropriating $6 million, or we're deciding where to get $6 million? Is that? Is that what the article is about?
Yeah, it is for approval to appropriate $6 million. That funding, let's see what.
It's Article 20, right.
Yep, there we go.
So we'll vote to appropriate, how can we appropriate $6 million? That's a huge amount of money.
The Town will borrow that sum of money. So when we anticipate expenses like this, we work with our bond council to sort of put that in a larger list of various projects that we typically borrow or bond for. So there are often projects that are coming off that list, and there are projects that are coming on that list, and those figures are put into the Town's budget and our multi-year plans, so we do have those projections, and we kind of know what's coming down the line.
Right, okay, so the paying off of the bonds is partly, we're finishing one and we start up another, but is there debt service on the bonds as part of our operating budget? Is that how that works?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, okay.
So the financial plans and budgets are also on the Town's website, so you can Google those, and you'll see that there's kind of whole sections for paying off those projects.
Great, okay, good. It's all very invisible unless you look for it, but it's good. We don't want the dam to fall.
Great, and thanks, Patty. Patty posted the Fall Town Meeting motion book, but if you go to Town Meeting, it should also have the capital planning report there, and that's also where we'll post the Personnel Board book as well. Okay, well, I'll just reiterate that if anybody does have any follow-up questions, you can certainly call my office at 781-721-7133, or you can email us at townmanager@winchester.us. Thank you, everyone.